Good evening. It is now six P M on Thursday, February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mister Arnie.
Present.
Mister Bennett. Mister Sims.
Present.
Miss Taylor Jones.
Present.
Mister Hankins.
Present.
Mister Yoder.
Present.
Mister Ackley.
Here.
Mister Lassenberg. Mister Perrin.
Here.
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the back vestibule of this hearing room. At this time, I would ask that all commissioners and all audience members to please silence or turn off cell phones or any other devices that could disrupt our proceedings. Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to revise or approve the planning commission's meeting minutes for the January twenty third, two thousand twenty five, regular meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Taylor Jones, second by Arnie.
Mister Yoder resists it.
Diana, are you pranking the new guy?
I know. It's what I do.
You may have to push it out again, Diana. Let's see if it.
Should I close it and start over?
Technology's great when it works.
Yes, I do, as a voter.
That must be something with how he's in there, because it shows electronic voting process, but it's not giving him that. Sorry, just give us a minute.
I was looking up at the monitor and I was like, is it just me or it's not? I think that computer's cursed. Other people that's up there, it's done the same thing.
Can I log in on my phone and do it?
No. Hmm, it shows it's in process. Going to Carney, Mister Ackley?
Pardon?
Going to Carney next week?
Yep, Wednesday, just for the day.
See you there.
Good.
You're in there correctly, so I don't know what's going on. We'll try it again. So if it's not coming up, Bruce, I apologize. We'll, we'll, we'll probably just, she'll probably just ask for your vote once she has everybody else's, okay? So do you want to tell me what your vote is and I'll place it for you?
Yes, approve.
Yes.
Yes, approve.
Mister Arnie?
Mister Arnie, Mister Sims, Miss Taylor Jones, Mister Hankins, Bruce, Mister Yoder, um, and Mister Perrin voted yes. Uh, Mister Ackley abstained with conflict. Motion carried.
No conflict, just wasn't here.
At this time, I'd like to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates or additions?
Yes, so, uh, late this afternoon, I received an email of support in Ida, Agenda Item Three A. That's the Bellevue Entertainment District Preliminary Plat and Rezoning. Um, the email of support is from Diane Bruce, uh, President of the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. Um, each of you has been provided a hard copy at your desk. We've also provided one out on the table for public viewing, but that is the only addition.
Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to accept that?
Motion to approve all applications into the record with that one addition.
Second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Sims. Please vote.
Mister Yoder, what would your vote be?
Approve.
All voted yes, motion carried.
We have three items for public hearing this evening. I will announce the case and then ask if there are any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicants will have an opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony that they would like considered in the record. Those testifying should come to the podium, state their name, spell their name, and sign in for the record. Testimony should be limited to three minutes, and I reserve the right to shorten that time if we have a large number of people coming forward to testify. After any testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which we will close the public hearing. Bottom line, use the, bottom line, use the golden rule. Treat others who are speaking in the same manner as you would like to be treated when speaking. Our first public hearing is Three A, which is a request to rezone lots one through five, Bellevue Entertainment District, being a plating of tax lots twenty, twenty-one, except for the right-of-way, and twenty-two, all located in the northeast quarter of Section Twenty-two. T thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six prime meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from A G to M U for the purpose of a mixed-use entertainment district. And preliminary plats, lots one through five, Bellevue Entertainment District, applicant, city of Bellevue, general location, northwest corner of Highway seventy-five, and Hidden Valley Drive. Case number Z dash two five zero one dash zero one, S dash two five zero one dash zero three. Staff, any updates?
Um, only the update, as previously mentioned, the email of support for the Bellevue Chamber for this request. Um, since the city is the applicant, I'll go ahead and provide a summary and an overview. I'll also note for the record, uh, Mister Dave Gotigan is here, Public Works Director. Also to answer any questions, uh, you folks may have on the engineering side of things. This request is for a five-lot subdivision. This, uh, preliminary plat and subdivision encompasses property that the city currently owns. Um, it is at the northwest corner of Highway seventy-five and Hidden Valley Drive. Um, this is being done to facilitate the upcoming construction of the water park. Again, this is just the preliminary plat and the initial rezoning. We are requesting the rezoning go from ag to mixed-use. Purpose of the mixed-use district is to allow for a variety of uses. Um, can combine office, retail, commercial, um, civic uses, also can have residential uses. The only thing it cannot have is industrial uses in a mixed-use district. Um, as part of the final plat that will be forthcoming, there will be a, um, mixed-use agreement that will kind of facilitate the site plan approval of things, so we are not requesting any type of site plan approval currently. The access for this subdivision is off of South Tenth Street. Um, part of that will be vacated and realigned with the project, which that area is shown on the plat. Um, also as part of this, just so everybody is aware, there has been a traffic study that has been completed in this area by F H U. The city has been coordinating and in communication with, uh, the Nebraska Department of Transportation. Um, we've also been in coordination with Sarpy County officials as it pertains to the Platview Road Expressway Project. So those conversations are ongoing. There will be improvements made to the area. There will be traffic signals. There will be additional turn lanes. All those items will be done in order to facilitate the entertainment district. Um, there is, the city is contracting with Olson to do, um, some of the engineering and planning design as far as a master plan for this area. I did provide you folks a draft of the master plan for the entertainment district. Please know this is a draft. It is not the final product. At such time, the final product is ready. It'll come through you folks and also come through City Council. That master plan kind of shows our overall fifteen-to-twenty-year vision for the area. And as far as what could transpire there, um, for services and uses, again, you know, focus being on entertainment, commercial, residential, all of those things, um, in one development. With that, I think we can turn it over to the public hearing, and if you folks have any questions, myself and Dave can answer those.
Thank you. Uh, if anyone cares to provide public testimony in this matter, whether in favor or opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. Not seeing anyone. I will now close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. What are the wishes of the commission?
One question for staff on the, we've probably done it before. I just don't remember. There's a note about the existing Tenth Street to be vacated. Do they have to take separate action for that, or does just the filing of this plat accomplish the vacation of the current street?
No, it will be separate action. Um, we will also, we, uh, again, um, we're moving the preliminary plat and the rezoning through just to stay, um, on target with construction schedule that we have. Um, grading is scheduled to begin, weather permitting, you know, um, here in the next few weeks, so. But yeah, that, again, that's all being worked out with N dot currently, but it, it cannot be done just by the plat alone. There will also be a separate document, a separate agreement as to what that will look like.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the commissioners?
If there's not, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan.
I'll second that.
Motion by Arnie, second by Sims.
Yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go to the City Council for public hearing on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Our second agenda item, request to rezone lots one and two. Uh, Kennedy Town Center replat eight, being a replat of lot seventy-five. Kennedy Town Center and Lot Five, Kennedy Town Center replat three, from BG dash P C O and BGH dash P C O to BG dash P C O and BGH dash P C O with site plan approval. For Lot Two, Kennedy Town Center replat eight for the purpose of an automobile dealership in small subdivision plat lots one and two. Kennedy Town Center replat eight, applicant, uh, O X U S L L C, general location, South Twenty-Second Street and Kennedy Avenue. Case numbers Z dash two four one two dash twelve and S dash two four one two dash two one. Staff, any updates?
No updates. I'll go ahead and give a brief summary if the applicant, um, or his representative want to come forward and sign in and just, uh, then they can, uh, do that while I'm giving the summary. This request is for a small subdivision plat and a change of zone to facilitate an automotive dealership. Um, this request is also tied to the next one on the agenda just because of the plat, but I'll, um, discuss this one first. So the two zoning designations out there will not change. There is currently BG and BG zoning out there now with the P C O overlay, but, um, the property line will change, so the, this applicant will have a BGH zoning to facilitate the auto dealership. Our next applicant will maintain a BG zoning district for their retail store that is proposed. So, um, with the P C O overlay, there is site plan requested, so that's part of what we're doing here this evening. Um, overall, um, the application complies with, um, zoning regulations, subdivision regulations. We did list one technical deficiency in the staff report. That had to do with a minor issue with landscaping. Um, the applicant is, um, is working on correcting that, so we just asked that that be corrected. If approval is given, that it be granted a probation of the technical deficiency, and that be completed prior to it moving forward to City Council. But with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and, um, he can go ahead and explain a little bit more what he has going on.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Harvey Parvis-Sotomayor. I'm the owner of the those two lots and the owner of the car dealership, Auto automotive group. So, uh, tonight, uh, I have Chris Baer, my civil engineer, as well as Nick Hoffman, my G C guy. So first and foremost, I want to thank, like, uh, the planning department to the guidance throughout the, the side planes, you know. Like, it's been very beneficial, especially, you know, I'm kind of new to this, like, you know, journey. So I'm kind of excited to share my vision, uh, with the Bellevue. Uh, I want to build a premier car dealership next to, uh, to those, like, franchise dealership to dealership as well as C D G R. It's been a long journey for me to be able to find a property that I can kind of envision my, you know, future and be committed to the, like, a Bellevue city. So, uh, the development is, like, I've planned it, I'm committed to kind of invest after, like, five million dollars to the development project, and they'll be part of the Bellevue community as well as, uh, can, you know, be involved as well, too. So, um, if you have any questions regarding, uh, the development, or if there's technical questions, I'll have Chris Baer to kind of join me as well, too. Thank you, everyone.
If anyone cares to provide public testimony in this matter, whether in favor or opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. Not seeing anyone. I will now close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. What are the wishes of the commission?
Question for applicant. I assume, is this a used car lot, or are you guys doing a flag with a brand name?
Uh, I used to do brand, what was that again, sorry?
Are you going to be branded with Chevy, Ford, Kia, one of those?
Oh, no, it's a used car lot for the moment, yeah.
Yep, thank you. And then question for staff, is the minor lot line adjustment, just so we can get the entry road to the northern lot to line up with the road across from it? Is that kind of the reason for the jog there?
Uh, yes, there's, and there's also, the site has, is a bit unique. It has a regional detention basin that was constructed with the original S I D, you know, approximately twenty years ago, so that has provided some unique challenges for the applicant. So, um, it's, it's been a bit of, um, taken some finagling to get everything to fit in there and to get the correct space for the easements and the regional basin, so, um, the reason for the plat also has to do with that. And I also assume it has to do with how much property the next applicant wanted to purchase from this applicant, so.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other questions or comments. I'd be prepared to make a motion. Hearing none. I'd recommend approval of this application based on compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area, in conformance with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, but subject to completion of the technical deficiency.
I'll second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Yoder.
Say yes again.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
These items will go to the City Council for public hearing on April first, two thousand twenty-five. Our third public hearing, Three C, uh, request for site plan approval for Lot One, Kennedy Town Center replat eight, being a replat of lot seventy-five, Kennedy Town Center and Lot Five, Kennedy Town Center replat three for the purpose of an auto parts retail store located in the southwest quarter of Section Fifteen. Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the six prime meridian. Applicant, Zaramba Group L L C, general location, South Twenty-Second Street and Kennedy Avenue. Case number Z dash two four one two dash one three. Staff, any updates?
Uh, no updates. Again, I'll just give a brief description while the applicant is signing in. Um, this request is for site plan approval for an AutoZone auto parts store, um, on a portion of the existing lot seventy-five. Um, staff has reviewed the, um, preliminary grading, drainage, um, site plan, and also the landscape plan. Um, staff has found everything to be in conformance at this point, so we are recommending approval um, based upon conformance with our zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, and also based upon compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and perceived negative impact. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Mark Zawinski. Um, I'm here with Zaramba Group. Um, we're a, a retail development company. Um, and, um, we're proposing, um, to develop an AutoZone, um, retail auto parts store, um, at the corner of, here at West Chandler and South Twenty-Second Street. Um, the, the project, um, includes a, an AutoZone, uh, retail store, about seven thousand square feet, um, and thirty parking spaces, um, to support the customers and, and employees. Um, we would have one access point, um, that would come off of, um, South Twenty-Second Street, um, to serve the development. Um, the development would also be served by, um, the exis- existing, um, water and sewer, um, utilities that are adjacent to the property. Um, and, um, the, the project would comply with, um, stormwater management requirements um, by, by providing, um, onsite stormwater, um, management control. We would be, um, constructing a new public sidewalk along Twenty-Second Street. Um, I believe that would be the only, um, public improvement, um, associated with the project. And I think those are the, the highlights for the project, and I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Uh, if anyone cares to provide public testimony on this matter, whether in favor or opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. Uh, not seeing anyone. I will now close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. What are the wishes of the commission?
I did have one question. The landscaping on Chandler required to be installed? It's shown.
Yeah, the landscape plan currently conforms, um, so we are, yes, any landscaping that they are showing will have to be done as part of the building permit.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions or discussion from the commission, I move that we approve the request for the site plan approval of Lot One on Kennedy Town Center replat, replat eight for the purpose of an auto pot, auto parts retail store.
Motion by Taylor Jones, second by Arnie.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I need to amend my motion to say that the reason for moving is that it conforms with, um, the area, um, as designed.
Miss Taylor Jones?
Yes.
The recommended motion should be on your screen there, and you can read that verbatim.
Okay, approval based upon compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, lack of perceived negative impact upon the surrounding area, and conformance with the zoning ordinance and, uh, comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
I'll second it again. Motion by Taylor Jones, second by Arnie. Please vote.
Yes.
I'm circling the drain here, Diana. I'm also a yes.
No, yours came up.
Okay.
Yes. Everybody's good. Um, all voted yes, motion carried.
These items will go to the City Council for public hearing on April first, two thousand twenty-five. These items will go to the City Council for public hearing on April first, two thousand twenty-five. We have no current business, correct?
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Zoom. Second.
Motion by, uh, Sims, second by Ackley.